We want to have a moment of silence here. Please, I forgot we have Mr. Sullivan. He's a volunteer fireman, also retired city fireman, and his son works for the village. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, the Speaker saying aye?
Aye.
Have we got the minutes of the village board meeting, December 13th, 2010? Need a motion on those?
No more.
Second?
Second.
Any omissions or...
Just that I can't vote.
You can't vote because you went... Okay. Okay, all those in favor, the Speaker saying aye?
Aye.
If the stench...
Village Board session, December 20th. We have the minutes of that meeting. Can we get a motion on those?
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or errors or omissions?
I'll be abstaining on that one because it wasn't there.
There, okay. I call a motion, all those in favor, the Speaker saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. And the abstract of vouchers. Those example, the members of the board approved the records with abstracts 2010, 2011, number 18, check numbers 824 to 886, in the amount of $979,571. Can I get a motion on that?
No.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, the Speaker saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Items of business. We have a new architectural design district consultant, resolves the village board of the village of Goshen, everybody agrees to contract with Harry Farrar Associates, architectural planning and theories for architectural consulting services with the village of Goshen Architectural Design District, accepts a proposal outlined by Mr. Farrar's correspondence, December The hourly rate is $90 an hour, for the principal, $75 for associate, and $40 for clerica, used by the planning board for architectural questions. Can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
The recommendation for these people came from Ted... Louis.
Ted Lewis, and yeah, and also Artoli, or Artoli's firm. Okay, any further questions? Call a motion, all those in favor, the Speaker saying aye?
Aye.
We have a property tax error correction for Eastgate, whereas the village of Goshen has received a correction of error from the director of Real Property Tax Services Agency, we've got a clerical error on the tax bill for Eastgate Corporation. Coach Drive in the village of Goshen, which is properly designated as tax map on section 123, block 1, lot 6, whereas the Director of Real Property Tax Service Agency has determined that the village tax bill for said property should have been $21,502.83 rather than $28,447.44, whereas the property owner paid the village amount of $28,447.44 on June 30th. Now, it hereby resolved that the village board directs the village treasurer to issue a check in the amount of $6,944.61 delivered same to Eastgate. It came from the county, from John McCary, that there was a clerical error.
The building apparently has something called a 485B tax exemption, which is a tax exemption given to new construction, general for businesses that are residential, and it graduates up, I think it's 50% of value, graduates up 5% a year, 10% a year, until it's up to 100%. And apparently, when the town assessor gave the exemption for this year, the report of the real, the Director of Real Right Tax Service Agency indicates that the exemption did not adjust the correct base amount.
All right, I need a motion on this?
So moved.
Just a second. Okay. Any discussion?
We have the choice.
Yeah, it's reasonable, that's it.
Trust me, I don't want to give up any flags, so we have the choice.
Okay, all those in favor, the Speaker saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, Heritage Estates Sewer Agreement. Should we agree on the whereas?
Just the whereas.
Whereas, okay. This is Heritage Estates Sewer Agreement. It's basically, we've been talking with Heritage for a while, if and when they do get the authority to build, we'd like to take this, so this is, this is an agreement to kind of move that along. Read the whole thing, Dave?
Let me summarize. It's actually what the resolution says, is we have a contract that's gone through several iterations, but the last iteration was in October of this year, that's attached to the resolution. What it says is that the mayor is authorized to sign the contract, which provides the provision of sewer service to the Heritage Estates subdivision, and it's a contract with the developer, ultimately it has to be the Transportation Corporation if there is not a town district, but there's two conditions. The conditions are the issuance of final subdivision approval by the town of Goshen Planning Board, and the second is a certification from the village engineer that at the time final approval is given, there's sufficient capacity to meet the present and future needs of the village, as well as the needs of the Heritage Estates subdivision. There's a provision in the agreement that indicates that this has been discussed a number of times, what the methodology will be for billing, and also the upfront payments. And in essence, to summarize, the billing that we're discussing, the billing that we've generally talked about, we intend to use with any...
Yeah, this will be the framework for any, anyone that's coming down.
Basically, again, to summarize, what it will be is based upon water, payment of the assessment, and a 10% surcharge on the rates poured out of the district user.
With those users being responsible, infrastructure, not the village.
Not the village, that's correct.
Twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars for each unit, $1,000 paid in advance when they put the subdivision back in, $1,500 which would be paid to the village publishers of the building agreement for such a... Okay, around this for quite a while. Did somebody make the motion that we...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just that this is, I don't want to say culmination, but this is the most recent step in our effort to bring in new users to the plant. We have the existing capacity that's available, we need to bring in new revenue streams, and this is the first step to bring in new users. We have the space, and the revenue will be helped, so this is the first step towards that. And we hope that their grants and necessary approvals by the town board, so they can move forward, and we can have these new users that will help offset, offset the costs that are being incurred by all users of this new street plant, both village and town together.
Any further discussion?
I would just add that, I think this is in principle what we've discussed many times, I've been in favor of this, I think that this lays out a way that we would like to go forward, and I think that the fee structure is going to be very beneficial to us, as we bring in new users, which we need to do, or to pay for the sewer plant. That's all I have to say.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Sure.
For me, the question of this project in particular is not the point that I'm questioning. What I question is granting approvals before an application in the town has an approval. And, no, we've discussed this before, and I have a significant problem with this. The villages have been the ball guy for projects that have been approved in the town, and when the town developer has screwed it out for many years, that's how we ended up with Arcadia Hills, that's how we ended up being responsible for difficult dealings that we're now grappling with 40 years later. I see establishing the same track record if we approve projects before they receive final approval from the town board. It's not a question of whether this is a valuable project or not for me, it's a question of how we process. And I think that, number one, we put the village taxpayers at risk for having to put the bill here, whether you agree or not, that is how I perceive it, and the difficulty here is that unless we know what framework the town is ultimately going to deal with, we are, are going to approve, we do not know what we're dealing with, we don't know what the developer is dealing with, and that leaves us in a precarious position. Certainly, there's some difficulty enough in dealing with the town over sewer issues, but if you're talking about trying to bank our future, and I appreciate the fact that we need users, that we need support for our sewer plant, however, I have great difficulty with saying, it's easy to say that we want taxes, and that we want to be able to support our sewer, but for me to approve this before we see what determination is on the part of the town, whether it's a sewer district, whether it's the other terminology, transportation...
Transportation.
What are we approving? We gave them, we gave them a concept, and we said, we conceptually, we support your approval, we support your approval process, and yet, it has not come to conclusion yet, so we still don't know what we're dealing with. From my vantage point, the developer has supported the village of Goshen, we gave it to them. Now, we, in my opinion, what we're doing is, we want the town to take action, therefore we are trying to motivate, but it's putting ourselves and the village taxpayers at risk here. In short, I think that it is necessary for the town to come to a conclusion about their approvals before we take our next step. We've given cogent support to the developers. I don't understand why this is necessary at this point, and I think it puts us at risk.
Well, I can just say that you and I had this debate earlier before the chamber when we were both running last year, and I think we both expressed similar opinions to what we're expressing tonight. It's not a question of whether there will be some kind of sewage treatment facility, the builder of this project is going to go forward, basically has the other alternative, build a package plant. Now that we sit here, I feel that we have a resource here, we have a sewer treatment plant that's state-of-the-art, we have the capacity, we have trained employees to run it, and what's happening here, obviously, is the builder knows that at some point, this is holding up them building their houses. They're either going to fall back, if they see no avenue open to them, and build a package plant. And in the future of this community, what is better in the long run, to have the state-of-the-art sewer treatment plant that we have, and sell some of the capacity we have to help pay for it, or to have these developers, who are going to be the ones in control of this, building individual package plants? I think the far better alternative is for them to use our resource, and for us to help reduce the cost to our village taxpayers, so I'm in favor.
I don't disagree with the words you said now. What I have a difficulty with is that we're not holding up the developers, the town is, and until they come to their conclusion as to which approval they're going to grant, we don't know what we're dealing with. Therefore, we've given them passive support for their concept to say, "Come to the village of Goshen, don't build a package plant." We still have to wait for the town to do their job, and they haven't done their job yet, I don't understand us taking this action. What we're saying is, "We'll take you no matter what," well, we need to know what the "no matter what" is going to be, and I don't know what that is until the town makes their determination.
My problem is that it's delay, delay, delay. For two years, we've been having this conversation.
Not a delay.
However, if you look at the numbers, and that's what I'm concerned with, for decades, the village of Goshen ignored its infrastructure. We had a sewage treatment plant that was falling into shambles, was not getting the job done, and we were accordingly cited by the D E C for that. Our plant should have been replaced years before, or made slight repairs, or looked into grants, or a multitude of things. That didn't happen by previous boards, and that's just the reality. So, a number of years ago, we were signed by the D E C, they said, "Yes, build a plant", and they built the plant. They looked at the big picture, and they said, "There are certain subdivisions coming into the town of Goshen that are going to require sewer service. We should accommodate them, and have them share the cost." So they built the plant this size, expecting the village to wish to come in, so we could have the burden shouldered by many, not just the village residents. That board left, the new board came in and said, "No, we don't want any new users," and they cut off all conversations. So now, here we are in 2010, 2011, with excessive sewer rates, we've had conversations by increasing the assessment, with no positive fix in sight, because we haven't had new users, we've done nothing. The village has done nothing about bringing our new customers new revenue streams. This is our first real opportunity to bring in new customers, to have more people shoulder the burden. It's not fair to the residents of this village for us not to do so, and we can blame the town all day, we can blame them left and right, up and down, but we need to do what we can to move this forward, okay? It's, they're important, they're part of the equation, there's a lot of parts of the equation, but let's move our part forward. Let's get this done, let's keep the needle moving down, let's move the ball down the field, let's just get it done. And that's all I have to say about that.
Well, in response and enclosure, because I don't want to get into a vagabond title dwarfing, certainly, I have to disagree with that, that nothing was done. There was tremendous amount of work done on our old plant, there was a tremendous financial burden that was coming down, in fact, we had a tertiary plant that worked beautifully for a number of years, and the D E C permitted that tertiary plant. When the regulations changed, we were forced to rebuild the new plant. Number two, there is, you know, there are times when we get financially hungry, and God knows, I can appreciate that, with the small business people in my family, for the last 34 years we've lived here. However, when one gets hungry, that's why there's no sidewalks in some of our projects, it's why there are no contingencies that were made for our future maintenance of street lights that we're talking about. We get hungry, and in our desire to make everything better for the financial future, I think what happens is, we become shortsighted. Whether you're pro or con this project, and certainly, this project is not adjacent to the village, which I've always had a difficulty with, because it's my al父's village, which means we're, whatever, however we treat this project, we are going to have to treat every other applicant between here and where they are, and that means we should have had a communicative impact statement, which we let to the developer to do, I find that odd. But aside from all of that, it's not a question of blaming the town, it's the town's approval. The project is in the town, the town has a right to their approval, and they have not yet come to conclusion. When they come to conclusion, we know we've made the offer to this applicant for capacity in our plant. It's up to the town to come to conclusion, and if not, what you're saying is, okay, come to the village, town, we don't know what you're going to do, but come to the village, and these men may, these people may be phenomenally solid and fabulous people, but I always remember Howard Gompf Garfinkel, who got the same approvals from the town, with the same nod, and then disappeared within two weeks, and left everybody, and those people in Arcadia Hills taking care of what ultimately never ended up getting taken care of, and just deteriorated year after year. I don't want that burden on the village taxpayers.
Okay, any further... Okay, to call a motion, or did it roll call vote, ma'am?
Trustee Charles?
Aye.
Trustee Matthews?
No.
Trustee Roddy?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
That's the good thing about democracy.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And thank everybody for their opinion, it's always good to hear everybody's opinion before we vote, so that was very nice. The County of Barnes, under the, this is for the grant that's been delayed, I guess by weather now, for the bathrooms in Solishin Park. Whereas the County of Barnes, under the Orange County District for Parks Grant Program, has awarded the village of Goshen, town of Goshen, $2,008 grant for $15,000 for a freestanding restroom in Solishin Park. Here, I resolve that the village board of Goshen approves the request of the Joint Recreation Commission to seek extension of the project. Completion date to the end of June 2010, let's make it 2011.
Oh, sorry.
I was referring to that in the morning.
What happened, I was surprised. I was a lot younger then. So make that change, 2011 is what we're looking for. I need a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Any further, any discussion on that?
No. I just want to commend everyone that's involved with this, I mean, the joint rec board, but in particular, Kevin Armistead, who's a commissioner of joint rec, he's a non-paid position, he puts his heart and soul to this project. He's taken it to the limit, and he's just, he's been phenomenal. It's been a cumulative effort with town, village, working together, with county funds, also village, town funds, and I just, I really commend Kevin in particular, but everyone else, Mike, Exendo, for doing a phenomenal job with this, and when it is finished, and the weather permits, it's going to be a great thing for the village, the town, and the community.
Thank you, I totally agree. I want to thank not only Kevin Armistead and the Joint Recreation, but all the volunteers that, some of them we don't even know who they are, that are helping out, so I want to thank them for their help.
Thank you, too.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, a call to motion, all those in favor, the Speaker saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, all right, that's best, all right, now we go to trustee comments.
I have no report, just the, everyone's been working really hard with the recent snow, I'm sure the other trustees have been a bit as well.
Hey.
I just wanted to thank D P W and the police for keeping everything safe and cool the last 24 hours. That's it.
Okay. No?
I just add to that, that, you know, D P W Cruz is always, they're tirelessly working away, commend them for all their efforts. I'm glad that Neil showed up, because I just wanted to make a comment, you know, Neil always brings up, when we're talking about the hospital site, about having an alien landing place there, and Close Encounters of the Third Kind is one of my favorite movies of all time. So last Tuesday morning, I'm on my way to Orange Hollow to work out, and I stop and get a cup of coffee at the gas station, and I'm going down toward the custards, and first of all, it was the biggest full moon you've ever seen, it's still dark out, right where the new real estate building, it looks like it's sitting on the roof, and it's a completely full moon, so that kind of caught my attention, and then I go down by Goshen Collision, and all I see in front of me is lights flashing all over this, all over the place, up and down this hill, and it took me a few seconds to figure out what it was, and it was as many dump trucks as you've ever seen in your entire life, it was dark, and all these dump trucks, and all this heavy equipment, and everything was all flashing, it looked like the aliens had landed, but it was really only the dirt coming away. That's it.
Our dirt coming away, bravo, bravo.
All right, thank you, pal. Marcia.
I wanted to say that on top of the snow, which commands, we have such a good setup for taking care of emergency situations between the cops and the D P W, it worked really well. We also had a water main break that was tremendously difficult, and trees coming down all over the village, the ones that were slated to come down, and which will be ongoing once the storm is over.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, may I ask one more?
Sure.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Have a healthy, happy...
Today's the mayor's birthday.
I also want to commend the D P W and the police force, and our officer staff here, who braved the weather and came in to take care of the public, they do a wonderful job. I, last week, I went to visit John Zappo, the hunter who the fire department found, with the assistance of the police, they probably say, like, anyway, I went to see him, he's in Brockton County in a rehab, he's still in fine, he was in good spirits, he's a broken leg, and some broken bones in his pelvic girdle, but he was in fine spirits, and it was nice to see him, and he was very appreciative, and he told me to notify the department, and the police departments were all there, and finally. That's all I have. Citizens' comments? Yes, sir.
The location of the water main break, please?
Pine tree, lane.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. That's it?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, it's over the middle.
Sure, you just want to say happy new year.
Yeah. And happy new year to you.
Thank you.
The discussion last week about paying for the bond, or what we're assuming will be a bond.
Yeah.
There was no opportunity to participate in that, as it was a work session, and there were a couple of things that I wanted to toss in, particularly, Kyle had referred back to the board coming to the community back in 2006, and at that time, there had been, you had posited that there had been a plan for a $100 surcharge. In remembering the history, I think it's important to remember also that there was a meeting here that was so crowded, you couldn't fit another body in, they had to adjourn it the following week down at the senior center. There was a lot of pushback at that time, with people feeling that the mechanism should be a usage mechanism, rather than a unit charge. There was a very large sentiment in the community that showed up at that time, and I think it's important not to forget that as we look at how this is going to be paid for. You have meters in place, the mechanism's already there. If it were surcharged, working backwards, taking what your costs are, and working it back to usage, it would be equitable in the sense that people who are using it today would be paying for it today, rather than the people today paying for future use, it would basically be equitable in the sense that the heaviest users would be paying the freight, and it would be equitable in the sense that, the last part of that just ran out of my head, senior moment.
It happened.
More and more frequently, it happens, unfortunately.
Well, those are good things.
In addition, you know, aside from the fact, aside from that discussion, if you are looking at paying this off short term, one thing that was not brought up in the discussion is that if you pay this down quickly to lower the finance expense, obviously, there's a big difference between $500,000 and $5 million, you know, 10 to 1, the first reaction is, well, it's, you know, not a discussion. However, if you pay for it quickly, you and I are going to pay for it today, we're not going to be here to use it, people down the road will bear the benefit of our paying today. Secondly, if you pay it off over time, you're paying for it with discounted dollars, you pay it out 20 years, we all know there's going to be huge inflation, you pay it down with cheaper dollars, if you pay it over time. So I think that needs to factor into it as we consider it.
I'm trying to say this, but your thought process is what we're all going through in our head.
Right, understandably, I just, you know, want to throw it out there, because the really, you know, as I've said before, I find it very disheartening that this meeting is taking place in an empty room, you know, the community's not here, so as just one member of the community, you know, I know you're all chewing on this, and Mr. Donovan made the point, you know, not to leap at anything, but to consider, and I know you are considering it, but I would just urge you to really consider the idea, oh, I remember what the other point was on usage, and I think it's an important one, and Marcia will appreciate this. If you pay for it based on usage, you create a disincentive to waste water, it's a very positive conservation measure, if you're paying for it based on usage. And, you know, you have users like businesses... And, you know, your heavy users like businesses, uh, people with large families, people who are wasteful, they're going to pay the freight. The, the retired person who's, one individual or two individuals who are, who are parsimonious with their water use, will pay accordingly.
Joel, can I ask you a question? I mean, I think with regard to businesses and economic growth, you and I, I think see eye to eye, a lot of things that you've said, and since comments I've said, in different way during my comments, and the issue of usage or assessment is something that I'm still grappling with, you know, the first time we talked about this, I raised the question based on usage, wouldn't that be better? That's a question I have, and I'm curious on your opinion, if you have one, if you do it based on usage, and the businesses are paying larger chunks, would that be another disincentive for businesses to come to Ocean? That's something I, I'm not sure, I'm curious if you have any thoughts.
I think anything that costs a business is a disincentive to them. Obviously, businesses want to maximize their, their profit margin, lower their costs. Large taxes, whether, you know, if, if you base it on unit charge, um, large taxes, no matter how you slice it and dice it, whether it's property tax, land tax, uh, and by the way, I'm adamantly opposed to the idea of a, a land tax. You, you basically have vacant land that you're looking to tax, they have no use whatsoever of, of the system. You may pick up, uh, Ed was using the word exempt last week, and I don't know if you were meaning those properties that were not subject to a, a tax based on units or, or charge, or you actually meant exempt, like churches and government.
Churches and government buildings, but their land isn't exempt, it's the building structure, all of that. So, they would still pay on a land basis.
But they'd also base, they would pay based on use as well, if you had a surcharge based on use.
No, no, I understand, but that's how we're using the word exempt, just to clarify.
Well, I, I just wasn't clear on that, if you were looking for those that weren't paying tax because they were vacant, or actually exempt.
Actually exempt.
I think anything is a disincentive to business, that it's going to cost it, but if you fold it into taxes and, and burden them disproportionately in their tax bill. I'll give you an example, uh, before Sorrento was, was sold off to, I can never remember the name, is it Exelon?
Exelon.
Yeah. I, I know someone who was looking at the property, who had the cash to put down on, not a, a down payment, but could have purchased the property for cash, took one look at the taxes that he would be paying, and turned around, and it was an ideal, uh, situation for him, because of the location, uh, he has, uh, it's a supply business with, with his customers in the surrounding areas, would have been perfect for him.
But he doesn't want to pay the literature book of tax.
But he felt that the total tax bill, uh, in this community was too high, and, and he looked at New Jersey and Pennsylvania, and decided not to locate it.
Part of the difficulty with having so much taxes on properties, that is not paying any taxes.
No question about it. As a matter of fact, I would like to see some way in which we could recapture from the county, uh, payment in lieu of taxes.
We've done that before, because of standard.
You know, perhaps they could pick up, uh, some of the heavier freight in our budget, which is police. That's, that's one of the thoughts I've had, that, that you've got the sheriff's office, let them pick up traffic enforcement and reduce our police force.
Yeah, I'm just curious to hear your thoughts on that, and all, it's, obviously, my usage is, that is, you know, a detriment to businesses, but for the grand scheme of things, it might make sense.
On the other hand, only those businesses that are heavy users.
Right, right.
You know, if you have a Sorrento Cheese Works, yes, they're going to pay for it. If you have, uh, some outfit that's basically dealing in intellectual property, and have a couple toilets that are flushing, and then it, you know, then it's actually an incentive, because their, their tax burden would be lower.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further?
We're adjourned.
Can I be here, everyone?
Yeah, you can. I hope you've got your neck, because I ran out.